Gurnat? Ms. Gurnat? Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson? Mr. President?
Here. Could you all rise for the National Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance.
Every man standing for invocation by the House of Representatives.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Look, we had a very tough weekend, this weekend, with a number of shootings and a couple deaths of young people, um, under the age of, um, who would like to watch over them.
Those families, uh, continue to shine your light on those families, um, and help this city become a better city and allow this council and all of its partners to work together to change the conditions in certain parts of town so that we can see a better day. Amen.
City Clerk Certified Publication Day Record, um, September 23rd, Noticeary Prude Council and regular City Council meeting, September 27th, 2011, current copy of me executives posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome. This Omaha City Council meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the public, uh, published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debatable issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it is not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic device.
Ordinance on second reading, item number five, ordinance to authorize and approve a lease purchase agreement between the City of Omaha Public Facilities Corporation and City of Omaha to provide funds for the lease purchase of certain computers and forestry equipment.
Public hearing on agenda item number five begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Uh, this is just a public hearing. Next week. Zoning ordinance on final ring and planning board attachments, items six and seven are one case. Six is ordinance to rezone property located at 2903 North 76th Street from R8 to R8, high density multifamily residential district. Seven is ordinance to rezone property at 2909 North 76th Street from R8 and R2 to R2, single family residential district, low density, A, planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda items number six and seven begin now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
No approval.
No lights or a call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
They're both passed, seven to zero. Resolutions rate preliminary plats, item number eight, resolution preliminary plat entitled Dylan Real Estate, one located on the northeast corner of 33rd Street and Q Street along attached conditions hereby accepted in preparation of final plat is hereby authorized, A, planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number eight begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. No lights or a call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted, seven to zero. Item number nine, resolution preliminary plat entitled Cornice Garden Industrial Park, replat eight, located northeast of 84th and J Streets, along with attached conditions is hereby accepted in preparation of final plat is hereby authorized, A, planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number nine begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. No lights or a call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted, seven to zero. Item number, special use permit, item number ten, resolution special use permit application as middle of Bear Properties for a special use permit to allow restaurant, drive-in or fast food in a central business district with an AC one, or ACI one overlay located at 1203 Mike Fahey Drive is hereby approved, A, planning board and planning department recommend approval, B is the planning department request the city council remove condition two on exhibit B of the application.
Public hearing on agenda item number ten begins now. Are there any proponents?
Uh, Mr. President, Mike Kelly, 7134 Pacific appearing here for Bear Properties. This is for a little ice cream shop we're building down on 12th Street, Zesto. We're here for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Gurnat?
Mr. Kelly, I know this, this just isn't a little ice cream shop, but I do want to applaud your efforts. Zestos has been a sort of a trademark, an icon, whatever you like to call it, uh, at lea-, in my, eastern part of my district for many, many years. And I'm applauding your efforts in starting a new one for a new chapter in baseball history and, uh, and for downtown, but also for the fact that you're doing your best in keeping your original Zestos going, and I hope that continues.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
It's motion to amend to remove condition D, condition two from exhibit B.
What busted this?
Yeah, we have a second. No lights or a call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Uh, and Jerem passed the second time for a potential conflict of interest.
As amended?
No lights or a call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
And your councilman Jerem passed the second time for a potential conflict of interest. It's adopted, six, zero, one passing. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7/8, due no meaning being held October 11th, agenda item number 11 through 13 shall be laid over three weeks to October 18th, 2011. Liquor, item number 14, The Cove Lounge and Grill, 3525 North 147th Street, new application, no location, this is an upgrade.
Public hearing on agenda item number 14 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Uh, I'm Ron Kikuski, uh, owner of The Cove Lounge and Grill, available for questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
No lights or a call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted, seven to zero. Item number 15 is Adobadua, Mexican Grill, uh, 3034 South 20th Street, Class C liquor license, notification, new location.
Public hearing on agenda item number 15 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Uh, yes, my name is Eddie Arzola. I'm owner of the Adobadua Mexican Grill on 20th and Vinton, available for questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Gurnat?
Can the applicant back up, please?
Sir? Sir? I have a question for you.
Yes. What was the question?
Just repeat your name for the record.
Uh, sure. Eddie Arzola. A-R-Z-O-L-A.
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, the, come on back up, sir. I'm not done with my questioning.
He's got a question for him.
The, uh, you're applying for a Class C liquor license. Would you be willing to change that to a Class I?
Uh, yes.
Okay. That's where it would be just onsite only?
Yes.
Sales? Okay, there would be no outgoing, out the front door, no packaged goods or anything like that? So you would be willing to amend it to a Class I?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, let's see. The, your record indicates, there's been a couple run-ins with, uh, with law enforcement, and it looks like the most recent one was, um, July of this year. Is that accurate?
Uh, yes, I had a car accident.
Okay, there was a, that involved the, a car accident? Is that, is that correct, sir?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And there was, let's see, in that particular one, there was operating a motor vehicle. Is that, uh, was that during suspension, sir?
Uh, yes. Uh, what happened is I have two, I have several vehicles and one of them, they put a interlock device, so that day I was driving the, you know, vehicle that didn't have that. Um, I was, uh, going to the gas station just a few blocks away from the place of work.
I see. And the other one that I had concern about happened back in June of '05. That was a driving under the influence? Is that accurate as well?
Uh, yeah, it wa-, yeah, it was, they placed me in probation for six months.
Okay.
And I completed. Satisfactory.
Share with the, the council today, um, for you to operate an establishment that has a liquor license, you have to be able to obey the law, and if, if a person has trouble themselves obeying the law, we need to be convinced that you'll be able to abide by the law, especially when you're operating under the liquor laws for the state of Nebraska. So share with us how, uh, what has happened in your life to kind of change this. And being the ones that is so recent of this year, um, I, I gotta be really convinced, to be honest with you. I'm not, I'm not pulling your chain at all. I need to be, really be convinced to support this.
Um, I understand. Uh, well, I'm currently, um, going to, um, you know, a series of, uh, meetings and looking for, uh, whatever counsel is needed, uh, because, uh, obviously, as you mentioned, there is a, a seat to a problem that needs to be worked on, and currently I am actually going to the AA meetings. I've been constant with that, and, uh, I've, I've done, um, a few classes that help, uh, you know, with alcohol education, uh, and also a better making decision classes, um, that help, and, uh, it, it really indicates yourself to take, uh, responsibility and also conscience how the, you know, how to, uh, alcohol could affect you if you don't, uh, you know, have self-control or, uh, you know, try to not let it control you. So I'm, uh, taking some classes, um, and it's, everything looking great, um, so, uh, that's, I'm sure that this is, it shouldn't be any problem at all.
There are several courses that are offered as far as, uh, operating in an establishment that has, uh, or is attempting to get a liquor license. Have you taken or would you be willing to take, uh, a course?
Yes, definitely would.
You definitely would be interested in doing, and I know that that, uh, is, it, that's also important to, to us here on, on the council. The, um, will you have, uh, I know that this sits on the corner of 20th and Vinton Street?
Correct.
Um, and that's where I grew up. Are you gonna have any outside music?
No.
No outside music?
No.
Okay. And I noticed on the application that, uh, you're also going to have the, uh, special events for parties and, uh, the like that, uh, an establishment, a restaurant, bar, grill would, would have. Uh, tell us what type of security do you plan on having when you have a, a planned event or even an unexpected event?
Um, well, there are several companies that we can hire. Uh, we already been looking into some, uh, but, um, they, we would definitely look for that because that is necessary, um, and that's also going back in history with the same building when the previous owner had that restaurant, uh, so we don't want to have any trouble like that. We would just, uh, you know, hire someone professional that would do the security for us.
What is your current occupancy rate there?
Uh, I believe it's anywhere from 50 to 60.
50 to 60?
Yes, correct.
Um, okay. And that's actually in both areas?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And the, the number of off-street parking spots that you have available now? What is that number, sir?
I would say there, it's, uh, about 15, 20.
Okay, and that's to the west of your facilities?
Yes, correct.
Um, boy. I know that we have some communication that's opposing, and I've always tried to look at all of these individually and at least give an operator one chance to prove him or herself. Um, all right, I'm gonna think about this one as we go along. I'll yield a four. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Stothard?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Mr. Arzola, I, I'm going to, um, just reemphasize what Councilman Gurnat said. He, he actually asked you all the questions that I was intending on asking you.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, we have to take these, these liquor licenses very seriously, and because of your past criminal history, it leads us to believe that if you can't follow the law, how are you gonna be able to enforce the law with your establishment? Because your job is to make sure your employees and you follow all the rules and regulations of the law, and you've given us evidence that you can't do that yourself. So we have to take that very, very seriously. Now, let me clarify. Did you take a certified alcohol training program? Have you?
Uh, not yet.
Okay. Um, I guess I, what I would like to do is I would go ahead and move for approval contingent upon you and your staff taking a certified alcohol training program.
That's right.
So that would mean you would have to do it as well as your staff.
I'll definitely do it.
Mr. Gray?
I didn't, I guess I didn't hear the answer. Were, are you in, uh, alcohol AA program?
Uh, yes.
How long have you been there?
Uh, it's going to be six months now.
Six months?
About, yes.
Okay. You know the majority of us, I mean, the, the majority would like to see, there's some sort of success indicator if you've been, if you get your year's chip, is, uh, and you're about halfway there, so I'm, I'm like the council vice president, I have to think about this for a minute, but, 'cause I know a lot of people slip around this point in time, and, uh, but let me think about it. Thank you.
Ms. Stothard?
Yes.
Mr. Jerem?
What's your name again, sir? I'm sorry, I missed.
Eddie Arzola.
Eddie?
Yes.
Um, I'm a little nervous about you being so, uh, close to your most recent, um, problem that's alcohol-related and, um, I, I gotta get a better feel for the type of business, whether this will be a restaurant or, or a bar, and what your day-to-day involvement in the alcohol, um, dispensing or sales is gonna be, so can you tell me?
Sure.
About your business?
Okay. Well, the restaurant, it's been existent already for a year. Uh, we were actually located in Bellevue. Um, the license for the liquor licenses, uh, simply because a lot of customers, especially in the area that we are now, they always ask for, you know, have a drink with their food, uh, so we thought, since being the place, being a, a building, uh, a bigger place, we wanted to have, you know, also renting for parties, and they also want to have, you know, have us, to have us, uh, liquid, so that's why we wanted to apply for that and make sure that, uh, we have those customers as well.
Now, are you, are you in AA as a matter of choice or as a condition of probation?
I would say both.
So as a part of the, um, alcohol-related charge that you had, judge ordered you to go to AA meetings?
Yes, initially, but I do realize that it's, it's been very helpful to me and it has actually shown me a couple things that I didn't realize before, uh, and once going to the meetings, um, and hearing all the people telling your experiences or their experiences, you realize how you're making the same mistake.
And when is the probation term completed?
It's going to be completed next year, I believe, uh, next summer.
All right. So if our, uh, City Council Liquor Committee had you come back in, in six months or so, you'd have your one-year medal from AA?
Yes.
Is that what you're telling us?
Yes, pretty much.
And if you don't, what, what are we to think?
It's, it's up to you, if, I mean, I would like, I would like to keep the, you know, the liquor license and everything, but if you consider it's not appropriate, then I would understand.
It's one thing to have a judge who has your liberty in his or her hands asking you to do AA, and it's another thing having your livelihood in your hands, and then it's another thing to have other people's lives in your hands.
True.
So I want to know what your commitment is and what, whether you really want to be in AA or whether it's something that you're doing just because you're satisfying a condition of probation.
Uh, well, like I said, initially, it was one of the requirements, but once I get there and I started to realize, uh, you know, how wrong or my mistake, what my mistake was, and, uh, one of the things that helped me a lot is to realize the responsibility that it is, alcohol, and, uh, and, and for that, I'm thankful because, um, if the judge wouldn't actually have me do that, maybe I would have been going or continuing into that same path and not realizing how wrong I was.
Mr. Gurnat?
Uh, Mr. Clerk, since we have a motion and a second, and the applicant has agreed to go from a C to an I license, which would require an amendment? Would it be a floor amendment?
Yes, you could do a floor amendment. You could still, you could just move to amend it to a Class I rather than a Class C.
My colleagues, um, as I said earlier, that I would truly have to be convinced, and I am up to a point, um, he has agreed to go from a C to an I, I think, which is a, a big step, keeping everything in-house. He's willing to, uh, take a course in, uh, operating in an establishment along with his He's agreed there's gonna be no outside music. He already has a, uh, a plan and is looking into for security if, uh, if an event or pre-planned event occurs at his facility, and, um, I, I got to admit, not too many operators that are just starting out know their occupancy rate and the number of parking spots that they've got. And plus the fact is that I drive by that establishment, going to work and come home every single day, um, and sometimes for lunch. So there are a lot of people in that neighborhood that are old timers, and they keep, keep an eye on what's going on, and they don't hesitate to call government when things go awry. So, uh, I'll be willing to give you that one chance, and I'll continue with the second and, uh, move to amend from a Class C to a Class I.
Can we, can we still do the six-month review?
Yeah, well, we'll do that. Then we have to pass it as amended. We'll, we can do the other conditions at that point.
I totally agree.
Yeah, I, I.
Go ahead, Ben.
Um, I would, I would agree with you, Mr. Vice President, but I would also want to include, uh, Councilmember Jerem suggesting as well that we have a six-month review to make sure that he's got that year chip.
Absolutely. And then just to clarify, if at the six-month review there isn't, there isn't a success, then would you just look at the?
With the revocation.
Okay. Okay. Uh, so we have a motion and a second?
We have a motion to amend.
Motion to amend. So you need a second? Is that it?
We have a second, we have a second.
No lights or a call?
It's on the amendment. Festerson?
And your motion is to?
To amend it from a, just, just from a Class?
C to a?
C to an I.
C to an I.
The other stuff we're gonna put on there as amended.
Okay.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Now, I think your motion would be to adopt as amended with the conditions that the owner and staff have the alcohol server training and at the request of our, uh, attorney, make that by February 10th, 2012, a specific date, and there would be reviewed by the liquor committee, the law committee within six months, or after six months.
That would be the motion.
Mr. Jerem?
Yes, Mr. Maugur.
Excuse me, Tom Maugur, Deputy City Attorney.
I heard a couple council members inquiring aloud what would happen in the six months if this, um, license, then licensee were to not have a one-year chip or were to have other problems in his personal life, um, how would that work in front of the liquor committees? What we, what our options would be?
If he, if he promises to you that, that by the certain date or, you know, certain time period, he will accomplish those two tasks that you've set out, and he doesn't do that, then you could either A, challenge renewal, which would be May 1st of next year, or B, bring a revocation. That's why we say try to put this time period roughly in middle of February, end of February, so that we can then, if it hasn't happened, we can challenge renewal during the March and April time period. And, you know, basically what you'd be doing is you have the authority to challenge continuation of the license if you find that he has not kept the representations that he makes to you.
So if he comes to the meeting, he doesn't have his AA cards or his one-year medal or he hasn't taken the class, or he has other problems, those are the things we can do, either not renew or revoke.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Did you want to put on the no music, no outside music on the conditions since we have them out there?
I think that was the understanding.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
No outside music.
Yes, okay.
Do you agree that, that you're gonna have no outdoor music? You will get your training before February 10th, and you and your staff, and that you will continue with AA and give, bring, within six months be reviewed and bring your one-year medal with you?
Uh, yes, I agree.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second?
We do.
No lights or a call?
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted, six to one. Item number 16, West Lane Bowling Alley, 151 North 72nd Street, a Class C liquor license, notification, old location.
Public hearing on agenda item number 16 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Uh, yes, council members, Michael S. Kennedy of Kennedy Law Firm, 11235 Davenport Street, here on behalf of Smirk Enterprises LLC, doing business as West Lane's Bowling Alley. Um, the West Lane's property is owned by Mr. Kurt Zubo, who's behind me's family. Tony Frisello bought the property and owned most of the land that's in and around that area when he built the bowling alley. Uh, the bowling alley for the last 25 years was operated by a different family. The company went bankrupt. The company went bankrupt since they owned the building and are good neighbors in the 72nd Street corridor, took over the building and, or took over the business and started operating under a top application on or about August 21st of this year. They are seeking a Class C liquor license and wish to have it approved by the council today. Mr. Kurt Zubo is here to answer any questions about the facility and, of course, his record.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Stothard.
Thank you. Mr. Kurt Zubo?
Yes.
Did I say that right?
Yes.
If you could come to the mic and give your name and address?
Raymond Kurt Zubo, 151 and 1/2 North 72nd Street.
Thank you. And since you sat in the audience and heard that last exchange, you, you do have a record too, although it is in the past.
Yes.
So can you just address that? Because again, these are, these are important decisions that we make, and we want to make sure that you will make sure your establishment and assure us will follow all the rules and regulations of the law. So can you address what has happened in the past, and can you assure us that you will operate a facility that is going to follow the law?
Sure. Well, in the past, I've had a couple DUIs. Probably the last one was 10 years ago or so. Since then, I don't even drink alcohol. I haven't had any alcohol for 10 years. And, you know, like Mike was saying, my father and I opened that business in the, in the 50s. It was a good family business, and we want to continue it that way, and of course, we want to set an example there also. And, you know, it's one of the reasons why I don't drink too. I have young teenage daughters that I try to set a good example for, but we just want to keep, continue with a good family business there, and it means we have to keep our act clean also.
Okay. Have you ever taken the, one of the certified liquor alcohol training programs?
Yes, I have.
Okay, you have. All right. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Move to approve.
Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I just add that this is my district, and I, I do appreciate the family coming back to own the business. It's been a long time. Great business in the area and great family entertainment, too. I had my six-year-old bear for her first effort at bowling not too long ago, and let the record show, she beat me with, with the rails up. But she beat me. We had a good time, and it's great to see you back there, and certainly with all we're doing in the area with crossroads and that redevelopment, we hope you'll be a valuable part of that, too. So I'd second the motion if that hasn't been done yet.
Mr. Grenant. Alley 10, too much oil.
Last night, they were, they were complaining there wasn't enough, so.
And we have a motion and a second?
Yeah, we have a motion and a second.
No lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Grenant?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Item number 17, Tees Tavern, 7821 Maple Avenue, Class C liquor license, nullification, no location.
Public hearing on agenda item number 17 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Zan Buck, Tees Tavern, where TSL Blue Duck Hospitality, doing business as Tees Tavern, 7821 Military Avenue.
Thank you.
Tim Lewis, doing business Blue Duck Hospitality at Tees Tavern.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. No lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Grenat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Item number 18 is Elmwood Golf Course, 6232 Pacific Street, Class I liquor license, nullification, no locations. Would be an upgrade. You have communications opposing, and you would need to, if you wish to adopt it, you'd have to have the stipulation for the approval of UNO.
Public hearing on agenda item number 18 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Terry Huskett, 6232 Pacific Street, manager.
Bob Baber, 13712 Shirley Circle, golf manager, Steve Omaha.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem?
Yes, this is in District 3, and I appreciate your efforts to keep the course up, and there's never been a problem with alcohol on the course. I have several neighbors and friends that golf there regularly and have been there several times myself, and I want to congratulate you on running a good, good operation there.
Thank you.
However, I wanted to make you aware, you are still within stone's throw of the UNO campus, and there are college students that traverse through the course, going to and from the north end of the south end of the campus, and would want you to understand you have to contact and seek the approval of UNO. Do you understand that?
Yes.
Okay.
So with that, I would move to approve, subject to that condition.
No lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Grenat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. What?
Thank you.
Yeah, UNO. Item number 19, CVS Pharmacy, number 3478, package liquor license at 2609 South 132nd Street, nullification, new location. You have some documents submitted.
Public hearing on agenda item number 19 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Buckheim, 1650 Farnham Street, Omaha. Mr. President, would you care to just take these one at a time?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Here on behalf of the applicant, Nebraska CVS Pharmacy LLC, for an application for a Class D liquor license for a new store under construction that's located on the northeast, northeast corner of 132nd and Center Streets, the side of the former post in Nickel. Here with me today are Dale Zerkammer, who is the market lead for CVS here in the Omaha Market, as well as Todd Dries, the store manager at 49th and Dodge, as well as Margaret Hayes, who is the store manager for CVS at 90th and Blondo, which are the next two items on the agenda. The alcohol in the store would be located in the, the interior store layout that I provided in, in materials that I submitted to the city clerk's office. The store hours for 132nd and Center will be 24 hours a day. They'll, they'll have a 24/7 operation. CVS does employ strict controls with respect to their, their sale of liquor. They, there will be no, no single sales. The employees are trained extensively on their policies and procedures, both at, at their initial employment, and then they also have a biannual training program, which the employees are required to take. So there is significant ongoing, significant ongoing training for them. They also employ a zero tolerance policy for any of their associates who, who would sell to a minor. The other thing I would mention is that with respect to their liquor sales, they use security caps on their, on their liquor bottles, so that they can't be removed until they're at the front with, with an associate, who are the only folks that can remove those. CVS currently has nine licenses, licenses in the state, including five in Lincoln, three in Omaha, and one in Bellevue. Since their, since their entry into the Nebraska market in 2006, they've not been, not had any violations, liquor violations with the, with the liquor commission. We've, we've reached out to the presidents of several of the neighborhood associations in the 132nd and Center area, including Mark Blair, who is the president of Royal Wood Estates Homeowners Association, Jason Valinsky, who is the president of the Montclair, Trenwood, Parkside, and Georgetown Neighborhood Association, and Jennifer Hendrickson, who's the president of the Montclair West and Kingswood Neighborhood Association, and, and we've received no negative responses from them to date. In conclusion, with respect to 132nd and Center, I would just say that CVS will comply with the Nebraska Liquor Control Act, and they've demonstrated their ability and their qualifications to do so over the last five years that they've been in the Nebraska market. And, and CVS believes, based on its knowledge of the market and, and its knowledge of its customers, that granting a license will be in the public convenience and necessity with respect to this store. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Dr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. The individuals that he mentioned and the neighborhood associations are very solid, and if they, if they don't have a problem with it, and they, all three of those are the type that if they did have a problem, they would tell you, then I'm okay with it. I'll move the approval.
No lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Grenat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Item number 20, CVS Pharmacy, number 5714 at 4840 Dodge Street, a package liquor license, nullification, no location. You have communications opposing and documents submitted.
Public hearing on agenda item number 20 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mr. President. Buckheim, 1650 Farnham Street, Omaha. On behalf of the applicant, Nebraska CVS Pharmacy LLC, this is a, a second application for recommendation for a Class D liquor license at the new CVS store under construction at 49th and Dodge Streets. As I mentioned, Dale Zerkammer, who was the market lead from CVS, is with me here today, as well as Todd Dries, who is the store manager at 49th and Dodge. The, again, the alcohol would be in the areas shown on the, on the store layout that we provided to you in the materials. This store, the 49th and Dodge store, will be open from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, seven days a week. Again, as I mentioned, CVS takes their training very seriously, and, and the same training regimen would, would apply with respect to this store. And I would also mention there will be no single sales in this store. The zero tolerance policy and the, and the liquor security caps on the liquor bottles would be in place in this store as well. I had mentioned earlier the fact that CVS has had no liquor license violations in the, in the five years that they've been in the Nebraska market. With respect to 49th and Dodge location, we've reached out to Dick Weiner, who is the president of the Dundee Corridor Association, Pat Goble, who is the president of the Dundee Merchants Association, Mark Nygaard, who is the president of the Dundee Neighborhood Association, and Dave Schenzel, who is the president of the Dundee Memorial Park Neighborhood Association. And I, and I am aware that Mr. Schenzel and his wife have submitted a letter on, on their own behalf in opposition. I did call and have some discussions with him and, and understood that, but we got no other opposition from, from any of those, any of those other associations. Again, CVS will comply with the State Liquor Control Act, and, and based on CVS's knowledge of the market and the knowledge of their customer base, they believe that the issuance of the license will be in the public convenience and necessity with respect to the store at 49th and Dodge. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem?
Yes, Mr. Heim. Could you come up and bring the manager for the store?
Yes. Todd Dries, 1606 North 113th Court, Omaha.
Mr. Dries?
Yes.
Is that how you pronounce it?
Yep.
You heard Mr. Heim say there would be no single sales?
Correct.
Proposed at this location. What do you mean by that?
There would be no?
When you say singles?
It would be only sold in the form of packaged, six-pack beer would be the smallest package, outside of the 750 millimeter, milliliter bottle of wine and spirits.
Okay. Now, and you're willing to make that a condition of the license at this location?
Yes.
And you agree to that on behalf of your company?
Yes.
And are you authorized to make that agreement on behalf of CVS?
Yes.
I've had people contact me, a couple that were just opposed to this location, and they cite the density issues. I'm also mindful of the Liquor Control Commission's decisions with regard to the Walgreens cases, where they found there was public convenience and necessity to be met by the issuance of those licenses, or at least most of them, and if not all of them. So I think that considering we have an applicant who's willing to voluntarily restrict their license to address what is probably the most pressing problem in the inner city with regard to alcohol sales, that being the single sales of, of beer containers, whether they, an airplane or 50-milliliter liquor bottles, as well as the airline-sized wine bottles and the 40-ounce beer containers. You don't and will not be selling those items. Is that correct?
Correct.
So the, I've had other contact from constituents have said that they understand the realities of what's likely to happen, and if that condition would be agreed to, that they would actually applaud your efforts in that regard as a good neighbor. And some of those people were the, the most vocal opponents of your store when the whole project was proposed and the waivers and the zoning approvals were required. So with that restriction, I would, in your agreement, I would make a motion to approve that location.
No further lights, roll call.
Festerson?
No.
Grenat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted six to one. Item number 21 is CVS Pharmacy, number 6733 at 1919 North 90th Street, a package liquor license, nullification, new location. It does not conform to the city council and state law concerning distance to a church. We have communications opposing. They have a, a letter that the church has no objections, and if you wish to grant, you'd have to grant it subject to their, what? To the waiver by the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission.
Public hearing on agenda item number 21 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Buckheim, 1650 Farnham Street, Omaha. On behalf of the applicant, Nebraska CVS Pharmacy LLC, sorry, I only prepared one speech for all three, but...
You're doing a good job.
Sorry if I'm repetitive. This is, again, for a Class D liquor license for a new CVS store at the southeast corner of 90th and Blondo Street. As I mentioned, Margaret Hayes is the store manager for the 90th and Blondo site. Alcohol is located on the, in the areas of the layout that, that we provided to you. This 90th and Blondo will also be a 24-hour store. The same controls, training, et cetera, will apply to this store as it does to all of the other CVS stores, and again, there will be no single sales in this store. With respect to 90th and Blondo, the, the, we did receive from the city clerk's office one name, Ed Sterned, who was the president of the West Dodge Edition Association, and reached out to Mr. Sterned and, and didn't hear back from him, so I haven't heard any, haven't had any, any native responses. With respect to this, as the clerk said, the 90th and Blondo store is directly north, across the street from St. Mark Lutheran Church, and, and it is within 150 feet of that church, according to the state patrol, from building to building. In addition, we recently learned that there was an elementary school that's housed inside the church. They leased space from the church, and that just occurred over the course of this summer after CVS had already, already commenced construction. With respect to the church, we understand that, and would request a favorable ruling subject to the waiver that the liquor commission would, would have to grant at their hearing. With respect to the school, I would, I would note that, that state law does prohibit liquor licenses within 150 feet of a school. There's no opportunity to waive that I'm aware of. However, for purposes of the liquor, under the, the regulations of the Liquor Control Commission, the definition of school is, is a school that is accredited by the Department of Education, and this school is, is not accredited, so it would not fall within the definition of a school for, for purposes of that prohibition. We certainly are aware of the school and, and have had discussions, and I submitted a letter this morning to the city clerk's office whereby both the church and the school had signed the letter indicating that they would have no opposition to the, to the liquor license. Sorry to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Grenant?
Mr. Heim? Just so that I'm clear?
Yes.
You prepared a pretty thorough packet for these three applications?
Sure.
And also provided a picture on these liquor security caps. It's my understanding that these stores that are applying today will utilize these security caps. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's accurate, sir.
Okay. I wonder if they make these for spray paint?
That's another story. Thank you.
Mr. President, this is just a comment, that if you've been talking to Ed Sternad and you did not get a response, consider yourself very blessed, unfortunately.
I will note that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion, we need a second.
No further lights, roll call.
Yeah, give it to Gray. Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-two, tobacco and phones for less at thirty-two twenty-three North Hundred and Eighth Street, packaged liquor license and application, new location.
Public carrying on agenda item number twenty-two begins now. Are there any proponents?
Jama Samiev, eight zero zero six House Fifty-S Avenue, Bellevue, Nebraska, six eight one five seven. Here on behalf of TFL Inc., I'm happy to answer any question you might have. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents?
Motion to approve.
Sir, could you come back up to the podium, please?
Jama Samiev, eight zero zero six House Fifty-S Avenue.
I've had some calls from constituents in that area. Are you going to be selling single items of liquor, like single cans or airplane bottles, as they've been referred to?
If you don't mind, I'm going to have Farukh Rakimov, he's our operation manager, to answer these questions. Would that be okay?
That'd be okay.
Say your name and address.
Hi, Farukh Rakimov, two oh two South Seventy-third Street.
Yes, sir. And is your business plan, are you going to be selling single containers of either beer or alcohol?
We'll, like, a single syrup. I mean, we will have those forty-ounce bottles, fifty-mill, it's in our plans, but if there's any, you know, opposition.
And I just wanted to get that answer, and I just want to add my own part. TFL Inc. is a part of wider neighborhood drive right now to get rid totally of single sale, single can or single bottle sales city-wise. As Councilman Jerome knows, I am currently a board member at JCNA Neighborhood Association, and actually JCNA is one of the vocal figures in the city politics. So what we're trying to do currently, to create a level playing field for all liquor places in town, where there would be a one broadband stipulation by the city which would prohibit sale of single-can containers throughout the town. Currently, TFL Inc. is selling single containers. It is in our business plan, although I would like to note that we are enforcing the strictest possible procedures. As there've been discussion earlier, all the clerks and all the management in our stores, they do undergo, they do go through the training. That training is certified by the State of Nebraska. It is for responsible sale of alcohol and tobacco products, and not only do they go through it, they actually have to renew it on two-year increments. So every two years, every person who is in our company, they have to renew their certificates in order to be continually employed by us. Besides that, as some of the council members know, we do have several professionals within the company who do secret shoppings, who do in-house stint operations to make sure that our clerks are in compliance with state and city laws in regards to dispensing the alcohol and being responsible throughout those activities.
Okay. This location is my district.
Yes.
And this is, I'll be honest with you, this is the first location where I've had constituents call prior to with their concern about the sale of single containers. And as you've been in the crowd today, I mean, there's been considerable conversation today about that fact, so...
That is how we view these activities. It is very good for us to have a response from the neighbors. It keeps us on our toes. It makes us more responsible in our activities and behavior, and we do sincerely appreciate that the neighborhood is willing to make their input. I know that neighborhood very well. I was one of the person who actually advised the management in our company to look into that area. As you know, it used to be a KFC in prior, and we ended up putting significant amount of investment because we do believe in the neighborhood, and we do believe that we're integral part of the neighborhood and want to stay with the neighborhood, as we demonstrated within the last ten years. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, it sounds like you've got a good business plan prepared.
Thank you.
And let me say this, if it would become an issue, I would certainly like to revisit this situation if it does, but I'm not anticipating it, but I just, I did want to hear your thoughts, so I do appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. Jerome?
Yeah, if I could briefly say, I think if we could have Mr. Mungard come up, just so council members, there's more, I think, nuance to the single sales issue than you think, and just to Mr. Mungard, could you take a minute to explain the difference in the parts of the city and the issues of single sales, the more dense of an area with foot traffic? Tell us about your knowledge of the industry and that product.
Well, I've had several discussions with Liquor Control Commission about this, because it's come up. This is what I typically present to the commission.
Your name, sir?
Tom Mungard, Deputy City Attorney. First off, I believe the City Council has the authority to regulate liquor sales and prohibit, either by ordinance or individually like this, single sales. You have the power to regulate the operation of the business once the license has been granted. And secondly, single sales of beer primarily, in some areas of town at least, leads to what we call road beers or walking beers, that somebody buys a single sale, single can of beer principally, which usually is cold. I don't know of anybody that sells single warm beer. You buy that so you can get in your car and you can drink it as you're driving around. Or you buy that so that you can go out in the alley out back and drink it as you're just hanging out. That's either a walking beer or a road beer. If it's a walking beer, well, oftentimes it's your intent to drink that beer and come back in, get another can of beer, go out and drink that, and the store actually becomes your refrigerator. It's the refrigerator of the person who's hanging out, just drinking beer out in the alley or along the street. That adds to all sorts of problems, because then you usually can't come in and use the restroom there, so you use the alley. Those kinds of problems seem to pop up around places that have single sales of cans of beer, because that's the obvious use of that single can of beer. So I've been telling the commission, yeah, it's legitimate to prohibit that because of the ancillary problems that come from that. And basically, the store owner, when he sells a single cold can of beer, is selling it to somebody who he knows is going to go commit a crime, break the law, because you can't drive around drinking your beer, and you can't walk around drinking your beer. So that single sale is really intended to assist somebody in breaking the law. So I've been telling the commission that it's legitimate for you to do that. I think you could, in fact, pass an ordinance prohibiting that. Whether you could restrict that to certain areas of town, that's a bit more problematic. I know that the commission has been pushing something called alcohol impact area legislation, which certainly would let you do that, pick certain areas that have stricter restrictions than others. But certainly, I think you have the authority to either do it on a case-by-case basis like this or adopt an ordinance.
And this particular area, I don't think has the foot traffic that you typically see as you get down into...
No.
...the eastern part of the city, and the four of us that have districts where people are just walking in and out all day long, and it does become their refrigerator. So for that reason, I can see there's a nuance here, but I do applaud Jama's efforts with TFL to work on the issue for the city, or perhaps zones of the city, because we've seen a number of problems in high-foot traffic area. And on a positive note...
Motion to approve.
Three of us today did a spot check on one location at Thirty-Fifth and Lake, where there are no single sales, and the manager seems to say that it's going okay, so... Thank you, Mr. Mungard.
No further lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Item number twenty-three, Addie Sports Grill and Bar, Hundred and Thirty-eight oh six P Street, request permission for a change of location to Hundred and Forty-one Ten S Street. You would need to do that with the stipulation of the waiver of the church, if you wish to grant.
Public carrying on agenda item number twenty-three begins now. Are there any proponents?
Timon Megan Addison, representing Addie Sports Bar, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Motion to approve.
With the stipulation?
With the...
This is a church stipulation, yeah.
Oh.
A waiver.
With the church waiver.
No lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Item number twenty-four, the American Legion Post three seventy-four at Hundred and Forty-three twenty-six dash forty-six U Street, request permission, change of location to Hundred and Thirty-nine thirteen dash fifteen S Plaza, same restriction, they would need a waiver for the church.
Public carrying on agenda item number twenty-four begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, thank you, Grant Forsberg, four 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 Regency Parkway Drive, Suite two oh three, here on behalf of American Legion Post three seventy-four. As you may know, the American Legions nationally have been around since nineteen nineteen. This particular post has been around since nineteen fifty-eight, and I believe we've never had a liquor problem since then. We're moving literally across the street to a new location, and we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. No lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Ordinance is on second reading, item number forty, ordinance to approve a grant from the Nebraska Emergency Management Agency to fund Tri-County UASI strategic projects that provide first responders in Douglas and Sarpy Counties with enhanced capabilities.
Public carrying on agenda item number forty begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item number forty-one, ordinance to establish a new Class B flammable liquid storage district B one seventy-four at twenty-six hundred Dodge Street.
Public carrying on agenda item number forty-one begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Jason Hanen, ten one forty-three South Hundred and Thirty-sixth Street, represent for Physicians Mutual Interstate Power Systems.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Present, City Council Rule seven eight, third reading, public hearing on agenda items number, item number forty-two shall be held on October eighteenth. Present, City Council Rule seven, see the public hearing on agenda items forty-three through forty-seven shall be held on the second reading. Supplement, present, City Council Rule seven, see the public hearing on agenda item forty-nine shall be held on the second reading.
Motion to adjourn.
No lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Ordinance is on second reading, item number forty, ordinance to approve a grant from the Nebraska Emergency Management Agency to fund Tri-County UASI strategic projects that provide first responders in Douglas and Sarpy Counties with enhanced capabilities.
Public carrying on agenda item number forty begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item number forty-one, ordinance to establish a new Class B flammable liquid storage district B one seventy-four at twenty-six hundred Dodge Street.
Public carrying on agenda item number forty-one begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Jason Hanen, ten one forty-three South Hundred and Thirty-sixth Street, represent for Physicians Mutual Interstate Power Systems.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Present, City Council Rule seven eight, third reading, public hearing on agenda items number, item number forty-two shall be held on October eighteenth. Present, City Council Rule seven, see the public hearing on agenda items forty-three through forty-seven shall be held on the second reading. Supplement, present, City Council Rule seven, see the public hearing on agenda item forty-nine shall be held on the second reading.
Motion to adjourn.
No lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Three oh nine.[1583.83]